Thank you for coming to the Lancaster City Council meeting. Let's get started. City Clerk.
City Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Mann.
I'm present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor, Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is from Pastor Dwayne Jones from Living Water Worship Center. I'm so glad you're here because I didn't look up.
Spirit of the living God, Father, we thank you for this day, for truly this is the day that you have made, Lord God. You said in your word that we shall rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we thank you for all of our city officials, Lord God, that you continue to bless them, Lord God, even with the tough decisions that they have made, Lord God, lead their hands, and we ask that you not only bless them, bless their families, Lord God. And Father, we thank you right now in advance of what you're gonna do as we look into the hills from which cometh our help, all of our help coming from the Lord who maketh the heavens and the earth, Lord God. And Father, let every word of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be found acceptable in your sight, you being my God and Redeemer. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, the Fledge of Allegiance, Ken, you wanna do it?
Yes.
If everybody would place the writing unit over their heart, face the flag, repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So where's the Sheriff's Department on the Baker Run? Come on down. You didn't see me out there, did you? That's how fast I was. Is this one team? Oh, it's a long race, isn't it?
120 miles, the longest foot pursuit in law enforcement.
100.
120 miles.
Wow.
So do they do a psych evaluation?
Wow, 120 miles. Tonight, I would like to take a moment to congratulate our Lancaster Sheriff's Station deputies on their first-place finish in the Invitational Station category of the 2018 Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay. And as you just heard, 120 miles. I would have expected more of you. For the past, for the last 34 years, this relay has attracted teams of adventurous law enforcement officers from around the world as they embark upon a race from Baker, California to Las Vegas, Nevada. The grueling on-foot journey consists of a 120-mile desert run, 20 different stages of varying lengths, and thousands of runners. On behalf of the entire Lancaster City Council, I would like to congratulate the Lancaster Sheriff's deputies on yet another impressive first-placed victory in the Baker to Vegas Challenge Cup Relay, and thank all of you for your ongoing commitment to the safety of the residents of Lancaster. Thank you.
Sir, if I could take just, just a moment, just a mo, well, this is the Captain's Cup. It goes between the two stations. Whatever team wins, it either goes to Palmdale or us, and if you look at the front, you'll see it hasn't done much traveling. We've kept it for the last six years. But really what's important and what I wanted to bring up was that this year, we ran in honor of Detective Mitch Speed. Are you up here, Mitch? Detective Mitch Speed, he's one of our detectives, facing some, finding some pretty, pretty serious health issues, but he's just, his faith and his leadership is an inspiration to us all. And we ran in his honor, and we ended up having the fastest time we'd ever had, 15 hours, 33 minutes for 120 miles. We beat Palmdale, which was our big thing, we gotta beat Palmdale by a full 10 minutes. But it was really, it was really the commitment of the runners in honor of Mitch. It really, it really pushed him on, and I couldn't be more proud of him, and I couldn't be more proud of Mitch. He's just a great guy, and his leadership and faith is really inspirational to all of us.
We could get the tall and back and angle this way, we can get, when we put you in the center, you get the center.
So do you have any cardiac arrests along the way?
Not from our teams, but other teams did have some medical issues. Hey Mitch? Hey Mitch? Sure. Sure, sure.
So did you guys take Marvin out of the race with you?
Yes.
Tonight, I would like to take a moment to recognize a woman who has worked very closely with the city of Lancaster for many years. Tracy Davis of Davis Communications, who used to have an office next to mine 30 years ago. After 34 years of building Davis Communications into an award-winning firm, including countless years of collaboration with the city, producing a myriad of award-winning Outlook magazine issues, as well as many of the city's widely-recognized marketing materials, Tracy has decided to retire at the top of her game. Really? I just couldn't imagine me doing that. Well, all of us here will sorely miss Tracy. She leaves us in a very capable, in the very capable hands of JPW Communications, led by President Jenny Wendell, with Kelly Grady serving as art director. Tracy, on behalf of the entire Lancaster City Council, we thank you for your many years of service and commitment to the city of Lancaster, and for helping us to create the most transcendent publications and marketing materials in the history of the organization. I would now like to invite City Manager Mark Bozegian to say a few words, but before he does, 30 years ago, she did my business cards.
Right.
And it was, it was terrific until somebody pointed out.
Oh, no.
There was no telephone number.
I remember that.
You remember that.
But there are beautiful business cards.
I'm sure we rectified that right away.
There's no purpose for you to be here?
Yes.
That is just rude, isn't it? You have nothing to say after 34 years.
I've known Tracy.
He has nothing to say.
Well, it's been 23. I've known Tracy and her family for a long time, and it's actually quite a sad thing. But one point I want to make is, a lot of times when we talk about going local, people somehow think, well, if you're going local, you're not getting world-class, okay? Nothing could be further from the truth. We have tremendous businesses in this valley. This is one of the best people in her field in all of Southern California, and she's right here, and we're fortunate to have Kelly, who will continue on, and she's done a tremendous job for this community. It makes a big deal when someone who works on what you're doing cares and loves the community they're in, and that came through in everything you did, and we could not be sadder and happier for you. Thank you.
Just traveling, I'm gonna travel and I'm gonna become a grandma this year, so, all good things. Thank you. But I just want to say that it has been a real honor and a pleasure to work with the city of Lancaster over the past three decades, and when I look around the room, I'm fortunate to have gotten to know so many of you personally, so I'm gratified to call you not only great clients, but also good friends. And as Mark and the mayor said, my longtime friend and art director of 24 years, the creative force behind her, Ms. Kelly Grady, she is going to continue on, and I want to say, on the Boulevard. So she'll be very accessible right there and moving into her new offices, and, and we just feel very fortunate that Davis Communications was a part of your many successes.
You're gonna tell her about getting the phone number?
I will. We've checked that, the phone number is there, it's supposed to be my same phone number, so we'll see if they get it transferred.
That really was a true story, I'm handing out business cards and this guy goes.
Where's Andy? Where? Andy, come on up. What? Take over.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Paris and Council, you may have asked for Andy, but you get me first. Tonight, it is my privilege to announce that the city of Lancaster has been awarded as one of the 14 cultural districts in the state of California by the California Arts Council. This is a huge deal for the city of Lancaster and specifically for our downtown. I'm gonna turn it over to Andy to talk to you a little bit about what that process looked like and what it means going forward. All right, I'm gonna, there's a lot of information. You're gonna get pretty slides, but I'm gonna have to read because I can't remember all of this. This is Robert Benitez, and he works at MOA, and he also was one of the leads on this project, and so I want him to, he'll be able to field questions if you have any afterward, but we'll go ahead. Thank you, Mayor Paris and Council, for allowing us the opportunity to share the process of this wonderful distinction and what this designation means for the community of Lancaster and the greater Antelope Valley. Culturally, downtown Lancaster has been the heart of the Antelope Valley since the late 1800s. Beginning as a train depot, Lancaster continued to grow and develop, drawing people with pioneer spirits from all over the world. Today, we know Lancaster is diverse, thriving, and dynamic city that has continued to uphold this pioneering spirit with unprecedented environmental initiatives, including the net-zero goal for 2020, the development of Lancaster Choice Energy, and the public-private partnerships with companies like BYD and Insight Development. The latter partnership facilitated the redevelopment of the Boulevard, including the re-envisioned Lancaster Museum of Art and History, and a focus on quality of life and culture in our downtown. MOA, along with the Lancaster Performing Arts Center, are downtown Lancaster's major cultural anchors, enhanced by the Western Hotel Museum, MOA Cedar Gallery, the Cedar Center for the Arts. This became an unofficial cultural district, which already was in existence, and that met the needs of the community and serving the master cultural plan which you all passed in 2016. The values of the city master plan aligned perfectly with the announcement of this new cultural districts program that the state was offering. The values included promoting socio-economic and ethnic diversity in our community, increasing the visibility of local artists, growing sustaining opportunities for young people, and celebrating culture. With existing programs like the museum's annual all-media jury art exhibition, the annual high school student exhibitions, young artist workshops, Powwow Antelope Valley, LPAK scholarship programs, in addition to the regularly-scheduled Boulevard events, exceeded the state's goals, and that was making the state designation for downtown a real possibility for us. At that time, Robert, I believe Angela from Destination Lancaster and the Boulevard Association, and also Suzie Silvestri from LPAK got together and started working on what it might look like for us to apply for this. The Boulevard Cultural District Committee was formed, which consists of partnerships between the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation, the Boulevard Association, and the city of Lancaster represented by MOA and LPAK. This committee met with multiple cultural stakeholders, including businesses, nonprofits, artists, musicians, educators from our community, and developed a plan, including how to tell Lancaster's story effectively and obtain the goal of this designation. This also included creating a mission statement for the unofficial Boulevard Cultural District, which is, "The Boulevard Cultural District fosters an appreciation for community vitality, local history, economic development through the arts and cultural experiences in the heart of the Antelope Valley." Telling our story began with a narrative application detailing the proposed district's relationship with its creative, native, and emerging communities. In this narrative, we talk about our vision for a Lancaster that is recognized on a state level as a cultural center in its own right, distinct from any other metropolitan areas. Our existing master cultural plan also acted as a guideline and framework for our proposed cultural district, establishing its immediate goals and objectives which advanced our application to the next level, which was very exciting, because I think it started out with over 50 applicants, and we made it to the next round. We were then invited to the semifinal round of the application process that consisted of the development of a cultural assets map. What is a cultural asset? A cultural asset is something that has value because of its contribution to a community's creativity, knowledge, traditions, culture, meaning, and vitality. These can be tangible assets such as facilities, cultural facilities, specific buildings, or physical works of art, or it can also be experiences, including people, events, and services. So staff collected over 130 distinct cultural assets within the designated and pre-existing P-Bid boundaries. These cultural assets include businesses, nonprofit organizations, events, people, and places. Our cultural assets map is interactive and available on the Museum of Art and History's website, and here's a brief video showing how the navigation process works, and this includes the 130 cultural assets. It was this cultural assets map that qualified the district as a finalist, and that warranted a site visit from the California Arts Council and the state. The state was particularly interested in districts that evolved organically. As a long-established city center, the district's redevelopment into its current incarnation was recognized as a natural progression for the area. During the state's site visit, they heard personal stories from residents of all ages, including memories of the long-established Christmas parade from the 1950s, and stories of cruising the Boulevard in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. In an unscripted, spontaneous moment with a local resident. The resident shared with the visiting committee that when he asked his teenage daughter how she wanted to celebrate her birthday, her response was lunch on the Boulevard and a visit to MOA, and we didn't have to pay him or anything to say that. The process was highly competitive with over 50 other municipalities applying to be a California cultural district. Congratulations. The Boulevard Cultural District is officially designated one of only 14 California cultural districts, and we're in good company. So if you noticed, those 14 districts, the majority of them are destinations for travel, and so this is really important that we're included in that. And, and how this, in addition to us being, winning the marketing stipend of $10,000, which will help develop materials over the next two years, the designation will be in effect until 2022, and this designation benefits our community, it encourages economic development, it improves artist support and retention, it enables cultural and historic preservation, provides recognition in district, and the district is featured on the webpages of Visit California, and yes, we are on the Visit California webpage, the California Arts Council, and the California Cultural District website, so those are really prominent. It also enhances placemaking and fast-tracks the Boulevard and culturally-related organizations for grants and other resources, and that's really, really huge, and I just want to share a quick story. Today, I got a phone call, or I got a text from another museum director at the National Conference for the American Alliance for Museums, and she says, "Are you here today at the conference?" And I said, "No, why?" "Well, you just called, called out by the Mellon Foundation as being one of the best programming museums in the country." And she says, "If you're not getting money from them, then you better be, so we're gonna get on that." But these things come from these kinds of recognition, this kind of recognition takes us to that next, next level, so I was really excited when that happened today, and I wanted to share it. Why is this all important? Well, did you know that more people visit museums than all professional sporting events combined? There are approximately 850 million visits each year to American museums, more than the attendance for all major league sporting events and theme parks combined. So the theme parks and sporting events are about 483 million, so it's twice that for museum visits. So all those people are spending money in our downtown. It is documented that arts and culture economies have grown for the fourth straight year. The Arts and Culture Production Satellite Account, released by the U.S. Department of Commerce Bureau of Economic Analysis, shows that arts and culture economic activity nationwide increased in inflation-adjusted 4.9% in 2015. Arts and culture economic activity accounted for 4.2% of our gross domestic product, and in other words and dollars, that means $763.6 billion in 2015, and is rising every year. The Boulevard Cultural District kicks off its recent state designation with a Free Family Day, featuring performances, exhibitions, behind-the-scenes tours, and interactive, family-friendly activities. In conjunction with the weekly Boulevard Farmers Market, families are invited to participate in this one-day cultural event on Lancaster Boulevard between Fern and Ehrlich Avenues. The organizations and community partners participating in this Family Day are the Antelope Valley Ballet, Antelope Valley Genealogical Society, Boulevard Businesses, Cedar Street Theater, Lancaster Ballet, Folklorico, Hula from the Heart, MOA, LPAK, and many more. And funding is coming from generously from the California Arts Council, California Community Foundation, City of Lancaster, Destination Lancaster, Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation, Lancaster Performing Arts Centers Foundation, and the Boulevard Association. I thank you all tonight for listening to me go on and on and on about this, I'm super proud of it, but I hope we'll see you all next Thursday at the Farmers Market to celebrate this amazing distinction. So I think it's really important as well to just take a moment to reflect about how much council embraces art and culture in the Antelope Valley, and we really appreciate that, especially here in Lancaster. And standing behind me are two of the people that make that happen. We also have two or three people at LPAK, Suzie, Rick Vanderhyde, Mike Rosa, Julie Secory, who are dedicated to this effort as well, and as well as the foundations that support those two entities, which is the LPAK Foundation and the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation. Some of their representatives are here this evening, so it's just, we're very, very proud of it, and we thank everyone for the support. Questions, comments?
I thought it was just my wife who went to museums. That's really cool, thank you very much.
Can you guys come down for a photo op? We have all these proclamations and...
Of course. I, I'm just curious, did the county wanna?
Yes.
I would like to say something.
Everybody who's...
This is really an exciting moment as a resident of the Antelope Valley. I have watched the cultural opportunities grow for many years, my family has benefited from them all, and Andy, thank you for your great work, I know you've been a big part of this, thank you to the city. This is an exciting moment, what a great, great distinguished honor, so I'm really happy to be here on behalf of Supervisor Barker to present you with this tonight for that. tonight for that.
Basically, good evening. It's an honor to be here. I do echo Ms. Donna. On behalf of Senator Tom Leakey, we are just so proud to have received all this good information about the City of Lancaster continuing to be a leader for the Antelope Valley. So I'm just going to say, we really appreciate what you're doing, and of course, Senator Leakey is behind you. So congratulations to you for your honor this evening.
Ken and I personally know that City Lancaster and the Boulevard was going to be a cultural center one day as we cruise down this thing, but I, Mayor, it could not have happened. This could, yeah, this could not have happened without the City Council on you driving this. Congratulations.
It's a team effort.
Right.
All right, should we do this? Yeah? All right, let's take a picture.
Okay, what else do we have? Oh, Ed, I almost forgot you. Ed's going to give us an update on the college construction. We passed that bond, so he's got millions and millions of dollars to spend.
Thanks to all of you. Appreciate that, and believe me.
I bit my tongue. I realized it wouldn't be funny.
I think you heard me.
Couldn't we have somebody from staff help the president of the college?
I can't even work the podium. There's no way I could have done that.
Thank you all for the time this evening. I really appreciate it, as I promised a little over a year ago that I would come periodically and let you know what was going on at the college and how we were spending your money.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. This isn't right. Let's, why don't we go sit down in the chair? We'll move it so everybody can see it rather than you talking to their back, okay? Does that work?
Sure. Sure. Thank you all again. In November of 2016, this wonderful community and the entire region decided that at a 70% level, the college could have a capital bond that would upgrade its facilities and prepare itself for the next at least 50 years, and we hope 100 years. And we've been planning to do that ever since. What we have, what we are through now is the planning and design phase, and what you will start to see on the main campus over the next six to eight months is construction fencing, swing space through modular buildings being brought forth. We're going to do some construction inside of a couple of buildings on campus that were not going to be demolished, and we're going to expand some of those classroom offerings so that we can continue to serve the community. I'll give you a little update. In March of 2017, myself and our chief business officer traveled to San Francisco, and we made presentations to Standard and Poor's and to Moody's, and the credit rating for the college was advanced to A2. With that move, the interest rate payable on capital bonds dropped by five basis points or half a percent. Later that month, about 10 days later, we sold the first issue of bonds under the bond that you approved of $150 million. That $150 million worth of bonds sold in two hours. Because of that demand, the interest rate also dropped. So before we had done anything, we had saved the taxpayers close to over $1 million on retiring those bonds because of the credit rating and because of the demand for those bonds once they were issued. Also, living up to our promise on the first issue of the $150 million, $15 million has been deposited and is on investment with the LA County Treasury as directed by the governor. It's in five-year CDs. It's earning 2.25% right now, and that will be held, and the only, the, only the interest earned on that principal can be used at the college, but it will be used to conduct further repair and maintenance in the future. Now, because we're doing some construction, the entire bond will have $35 million deposited in that treasury account. The interest will grow on that $35 million, and that interest in perpetuity will be used to maintain the campus. So we will no longer be nearly as dependent on the whims of Sacramento to take care of this wonderful facility that you've given us, and we are doing that right now. I'm also very pleased to announce to you that the college is debt-free. That's because, that's because of all of you and your wonderful support, and I can't thank you enough for that. A couple of things in the planning phase so that you're aware of it. The main entrance to the college will change. It will move from K and 30th, and it's really interesting how 18,000 students think we only have one entrance to the campus. But it will move, it will move to J-12 and 30th, will become the main door to the campus, and that is in the heart of what the campus has grown to. That is here at this entrance here off, this is 30th here, this is the main entrance that will become in to the campus, and that will house the new Student Services Building. We did a survey on campus to determine which was the most detested building on campus, and the Student Services Building won almost unanimously. It's been renovated many times over the years and repaired and, and other things done to it that, for instance, the original patio was converted to a classroom, but it's still got the post in the middle of the classroom, things like that. In conjunction at J-12 and 30th, in our partnership with AVTA and some of the things that we've been doing, there will be a transfer station and a bus stop right at 30th and J-12 here, which will mean that our students will no longer be dodging traffic to get on campus crossing from K and 30th or across 30th straight away. They will be dropped off on campus. And I also want to congratulate AVTA and the wonderful work that they've done with us. Beginning in August, we will have express service between the main campus at Lancaster and the Palmdale Center, which means that the students in the region will be able, and in particular, our SOAR high school students, will be able to move much more quickly to and from home, work, and school, so we can keep them in school. And my thanks to AVTA for that good work. That's been significant. Along with this planning, we're starting to move people around a little bit. What I've told people on campus is that you have to keep your sense of humor. The reason being is we're going to be displacing people from their regular offices into swing space. Some of them will be moving, having to move once and twice. Construction fencing is going to go up, which means just ingress and egress off-campus, and just moving around will be difficult. It will be difficult for all of you as well. So I ask you to keep and maintain your sense of humor with us as we try to work through it. We're on a 10-year build-out, so it's going to be very aggressive, a lot of things moving very quickly. I don't know if we can hold to that schedule, but that's the initial planning phase right now. So this is the way campus will look. The orange buildings will be the new buildings, and for, but those buildings are coming because we're going to take other buildings down. So we're not significantly increasing capacity, but because of new technologies and space usage and energy usage and those kinds of things, we will get increased capacity just by nature of the way we build. The college between the main campus and the Palmdale Center will have a capacity of 30,000 students, which will take us into almost 2040. This is the first building that will go up. It's called Sage Hall, and we're renaming some things on campus to reduce confusion, but also to give it a greater feel of an institution of higher learning. Instead of SSV, or SCT, or APL, we're starting to go to more of the distinction of, of things around the Antelope Valley. So it could be trees, it could be flora fauna, those kinds of things, elements of the Antelope Valley that are important to us, and then we're attaching them to the name of a hall. So Sage Hall, it will become our, our learning center for students. This is have tutorials, one-on-one tutorials, as well as workshops for students, computer lab, several other things. Roy Knapp was the first autonomous leader of the college, and his name was originally put on the original library. It was Knapp Library. That became the Roy A. Knapp Learning Center. Well, because we're moving the Learning Center and the original library, we're going to continue to honor the family, and the existing library will become Knapp Library again. So we're continuing to hold that, and it'll become Knapp Hall. The Learning Center will be over closer to where the lecture hall, the original lecture hall is, if you remember campus, or those of you who know campus, and it will be called Sage Hall, and that will be our Learning Center. It will be one of the first buildings to go up. And to replace the hated Student Services Building, this is the new front door. It is a dynamic building. It will incorporate a lot of alternative energy sources, natural movements of air, desert scaping, all kinds of things, and it will be right at the center of campus as you come in off J-12. We're very, very proud of it. It will be a one-stop for students so that all the services that student needs to become part of the college will be found in the one building. And right behind it, we will move the Student Center, which will become known as the Commons. But this is also where the, the community will be able to come and be able to get directions, and it will be in the heart of campus. This will go up very, very soon, shortly after Sage Hall, and as we get some swing space involved in it. So I think we're very proud of what this will look like. Thank you. And then the last building that is part of Phase One, it's called the Discovery Lab. That will be our new Career and Technical Education Building. It will be just north of what is known now as TE7 or Technical Education Building 7, which is where we have most of our airframe structures, classes, and engineering labs and those kinds of things, and this will be right above that. We'll have, right north of that, we'll have state-of-the-art welding labs, advanced manufacturing, avionics and electronics. Those kinds of programs will be housed in the Discovery Lab, then it will be adjacent to TE7. Now, these three buildings were chosen because of swing space. So being able to move people the fewest number of moves and the purchase of the fewest number of modular buildings causes us to phase in this way. We also have had a wonderful relationship with the LA County Sheriff's Department over the years, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to contract with them and have them, their service on campus and what it has done for campus safety and environments. And they will be getting a permanent structure over 32nd West, right west of the Performing Arts Theater there at that entrance to campus. But it's, it's with great pride that we're able to do that as well, because we've got a tremendous relationship, and what those young men and women do for us is amazing. So I will periodically let you know, I want you to know that we are experiencing some cost increases already, and we're ahead of most of the districts in the state, but because of an economy that's heating up, which is always good, and competition for materials and labor and other districts that have past bonds, costs are starting to go up a little bit. But we're being very judicious with your, with your dollars, and when people get a little extravagant, we have them back off, and we take another look at, at the materials and the buildings that we have. But that's our job in protecting the resources that you have entrusted to us. So again, I thank you very much. I enjoy and appreciate the opportunity to share with you what we're doing at the college. Very, very proud of everybody there. And we have some programs that have gotten some national attention as well. The college won 12 stars for career technical education across the state. That means that not only are our students getting degrees and certificates, but they're going to work because they're measured by how many jobs that they, we help them gain and what their gain and earnings are as well. So very pleased with that. So I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor? Okay.
Old door opening. Sounds like me getting out of bed in the morning.
Okay, any questions?
Can you ask me about the partnership between IBEW and the college?
Would you?
Can you tell us about your partnership with some of the unions like the IBEW as far as training facilities, what you're doing to train everyone so we can maintain a 4.2 unemployment average?
Sure. We've already entered into, and we offer right now, a pre-apprenticeship curriculum in conjunction with the building trades. What this does is this exposes young people to the nature of apprenticeship work, goes through some of the OSHA requirements and some of the basic skills trainings, and then we're moving on. We have been working with several of the unions, IBEW, ironworkers, and the building trades, to develop what are known as full apprenticeship programs and for us to become an LEA, or Elite Educational Agency. And what that does is we work directly with the unions so that when young people are involved in the apprenticeship, we work towards their curriculum and becoming a program of study, and then the general education of the college forms the other part of the degree. So young people that when they're in the apprenticeship program, when they become journeymen, they also have an associate's degree, and we're working on developing those partnerships right now.
You're a good partner to have AVTA partnered with you, and it took almost three hours to get from the Palmdale Campus through AVTA to the Lancaster Campus, and now we've got it down to 24 minutes, I believe. So I think that's, that's good.
And also in a partnership with AVTA and the And, and also in a partnership with AVTA and the Air Quality Board, we've taken a whole bunch of students off the road and put them in buses, because the three, the three entities provide free bus passes for over 700 students per semester.
So it's a good partnership that, that we have of all three entities, and it works well, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, and thank all of you. I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Is there anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Want abstention?
You weren't here, were you?
Yes, that's correct. Motion passes 401, Director. Councilmember Underwood Jacobs abstaining.
Thank you. I want to move Council agenda item number two to consider the nomination and appointment of Lisa Rodriguez as Deputy Mayor of Public Safety to the front, meaning now. And
CA2?
Huh? CA2. And I'm making that nomination. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Any speaker cards? Nothing? Okay, let's vote. And it's unanimous. Would the new deputy mayor come up?
Speech.
Okay. And she apologizes for not having a speech?
No, you don't get to.
I, Lisa Rodriguez.
Hi, Lisa Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution.
I will support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Now, true. True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
To the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of California.
Of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For, for purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon what I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Okay, tell that heart to slow down.
I know. You can, you can hear it, you can feel it.
I can hear it. I don't spell my name, B-R-I-T-T. That's an initial.
No.
Difficult. Lisa's primary function as the Deputy Mayor of Public Safety is to immediately attack the issue of human trafficking in the city of Lancaster, especially in regards to our children. And we, we need someone to coordinate all of the efforts to be, to make a definitive move in crushing that from our city. And that's what she's going to work on first. So anybody out there engaged on internet that shouldn't be, get ready, because you may disappear pretty quickly. Okay?
Lisa. There's a chair open.
We don't have a card for her, Brett? Do you? All right. Okay. So you realize, Lee, that you now report to her?
That's nothing new. That's been happening for some time now.
Okay. Any items on the consent calendar that we have to pull?
We need to pull CC4. Angela has a conflict.
I must recuse myself because of proximity to my employer.
Anything else? All right. As it's presently constituted, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as currently comprised pulling CC4.
Second that. Let's vote.
Do I abstain, or do I? No, it's not working.
Let's try it again. Clear it. Let's do it again. And it's unanimous. Thank you. CC4, you're out of here.
I'll move where you approve CC4.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous with councilman, councilperson Angela Underwood Jacobs outside the room. You can come back now. I'm so glad to see you. I missed you. Okay, public hearing item one. We go for public hearing item one?
Yes.
Any speaker cards?
We have three.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. We'll hear a report from Jason Cottle, Deputy City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Today, before use of Resolution Number 1814 authorizing the City Manager to negotiate and execute two real estate purchase option agreements with Sustainable Holdings Incorporated. Sustainable Holding is also known as S-Power to many of you as it relates to a solar developer in, in the community. The two properties in question are approximately 40 acres, two different parcels, one at 70th Street West and Avenue I, the other at 80th Street West and Avenue G. The anticipated purchase price for respectively is $304,000 and $287,000, both with prices that came from an appraisal. We have had no prior offers on these properties, and it was staff determination that they, the city does not have any immediate use for them, and they're available and able to be sold. It is to be noted that this is a solar developer that is purchasing them. This in no way gives them any authority to develop, build, or operate a solar facility. That still must, must and is responsible to go through the traditional processes that the city holds from a land use perspective. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is the sale contingent on that?
The sale is not contingent upon the successful approval of that, that CUP and other zoning requirement.
There is a contingency, however, as to one of the parcels with regard to clear title. There's a title issue that will need to be cleaned up, and if that can't be cleared, then that one will, will terminate.
Any other questions? Thank you. Don Weiss?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and other officers present in the audience. I appreciate your giving me a little bit of time to speak. I wanted to take just a second, though, before I start on this, to thank you for the report from the ABC President, Mr. Newson. That was super. That was a super report on the use of a bond, bond monies, that is a periodic frustration of my own. We see bonds come up for us to be voted for. Often or rarely do we ever see anything that reports how those bonds are being used, and that was an excellent report about how those things are going to good use, which goes a long way to making one more inclined to vote again for such a thing if, if you're getting good information. But rarely do we get good information like that as to what's going on. So thank you for that. That was super.
Sure.
I'm a resident of Lancaster.
Hold on, start the clock again. There you go. I mean, it's not very long as it is, right?
Oh, Jiminy. I'm a resident of Lancaster. My wife and I travel the, the hills and the aqueduct for recreational purposes. We travel the valley for business and, and shopping and exit the valley, and occasionally I get to look down over the valley from above, and we see solar facilities growing here and there in different places. They obstruct the country that we see in traveling in and out of the valley. They obstruct the view of the scenery around, and so often they give the appearance of a blight on the land. So while I'm not here as a proponent or opponent of your sale of property, the issue did raise with me a question. Are there any esoteric appearance kind of criteria that you use to help in making these decisions? And are there any boundaries that you establish in a way that would help us prevent the valley, this valley that was, looked so neat many years ago when none of that was here, from being papered with these things in any place where there's available land that doesn't have any other intended use? If there are, can you speak to them? And if there are not, would you consider attempting to adopt something that would be useful as a criteria for making these decisions, other than the business case, which is certainly understandable?
I, you know, I appreciate the concern, and I know exactly what you're talking about as we look down onto the valley. The, at least from my point of view, not necessarily the council's point of view, the, the primary concern I have is I want to be able to produce enough power within the limits of the Antelope Valley that we can become an island if we need to, and literally come off the grid and use that power in the case of some crisis, like an earthquake, something like that. And that's the overall plan that, that we have. But I am becoming more and more mindful of the fact that it, there doesn't seem to be a real consistency in how these panels are being spread out, and we should look at that. No, I don't have a time limit for talking.
We could change that.
Not while he's at the head of the table.
And perhaps we should be looking at that. In this particular sale, it's not really relevant because they don't have approval for it, but I am becoming more and more mindful of that. And also, I hope to be able to report within the next few months of the actual completion dates to be able to become an island if we need to. But the, the thought I have is that I want this to be a resilient city regardless of what occurs, and that's what we are working towards. And yeah, there is a, there is an offset, and the offset is we've got these mirrors, essentially is what they look like, sprinkled around the valley. So let's develop a plan as to what we can do, what we should do, and how far we're going to take this. All right? Okay? I don't know that it's going to satisfy people who are really opposed to this, but I don't know any other way of generating power that we can utilize for that purpose that's not going to come falling down the moment something terrible happens. All right?
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't expect any kind of definitive answer other than if you consider establishing some criteria by which to make decisions and boundaries that you consider to be important to bound the thing, then, and ways that you can mitigate these appearances of things as they go, then you can end up with both. A self-sustaining valley, which is a laudable place to be, and we ought to have, and we have the technology to do that, but preserve the appearance of the place too for people that live here as well as look down on it.
I've also thought that this is a way we could be utilizing to force the redevelopment of the city, you know, 50 years from now, if we, if we were bounded by these things around, you know, around us, as, instead of all over the place. So, yeah, we, I think we're at that point where we can start putting some boundaries to it. All right? Thank you.
Can I respond? Can I respond?
Sure.
Mayor Paris did give a speech out at S-Power one time that he did say if we had our choice, it wouldn't be solar. We'd rather have agriculture there. If we didn't have agriculture, we'd like some manufacturing, some business for the jobs. If it wasn't that, it'd be homes. But because we don't have the, the power, nor the water, nor the other things that go along with it, that we are kind of forced to look at the employment situation for our citizens to make sure that they have a job to go to. And that's one of the things that we're actually looking at. So as a council, I think that everyone looked into it and, and said if we had our choice, we'd rather have other things, but we don't have the water, we don't have those choices to, to do. And to keep in mind that it's not our property, it's being developed by other people. So I just wanted to point that out. I thought it was very good that you brought it up before.
Thank you. Ginger Stout?
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Council? Council members? I just would, thank you. I would just like to, I'm representing the Antelope Bakers Town Council this evening, and just like to remind you that both of these properties fall within our sphere of influence and directly result in, well, of course, we would consider it mostly negative, living impacts to our area, and so we remember, we'd like to remind you, please, in being proactive, that you consider an environmental impact report for these areas, although they may seem small to you. Cumulatively, S-Power and the county which was doing the solar fields before that is massive, and you just add little bits to it, but it all adds up. And a little bit of crime here, the broken windows theory, a little bit of broken windows, a little bit of this, and pretty soon you have a massive problem. So that you require that, so that we can see cumulatively what is the result on the people, the wildlife, you know, what's, how is it going to change the valley? Is it good or bad? And that allows also the residents to have a real input, because there's real detail there that is not in an M and D. And also to ask that the dust control panel, which you facilitated with S-Power for the worst, one of the worst of the dust-producing solar fields out on 93rd and, and around Avenue F in that area, that you also consider and add this parcel to it. So although dust is produced differently in different areas, we'd like to be able to have a say and an agreement on yes, would the, the dust control plan that you come up with is in fact acceptable to us. is, in fact, acceptable to us. So, we'd just like to be, to remind you of that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Joshua Murphy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members. Thank you for this time. This is my, I think, my third time up here, and I wish it wasn't always in opposition on something. I don't have my pictures and my documentation with me, because I literally just found out about this proposed sale a couple hours ago. Needless to say, most of us that live in Antelope Bakers are opposed to the solar panels. But I understand both sides of the moral questions. And I'm sorry that there's been some angst between our community and the members and the employees. I don't hold anything against somebody that's doing a job to provide for your family, and I hope that we will fight our battles in the proper venues, and at the end of the day, we could still sit down and barbecue together. Having said that, coming to do with this particular...
How refreshing. Thank you.
You know, I get angry. I'm angry about some of the things that are going on. I'm very angry, but I don't want to live in a community where we're all fighting with each other. We're neighbors. My concerns, this sale's probably going to go through, I imagine, but I would like to see a few things addressed before that happens. One of the things is, and this is the documentation that I have, but I don't have it with me, there have been photos taken of trucks going in and out of the solar places that are already, that already exist, vastly speeding the speed limit, going through stop signs, and driving on the roads that are posted that the solar trucks should not be driving on. I would ask that S-Power address this. As you all know, we have a massive problem with people dying at the intersections in our neighborhood, and we don't need heavy trucks adding to that problem. We need solutions. That's in the best interest of all of us.
Wait a minute. Do we have a disproportionate number of fatalities?
I'd have to look. There's a couple intersections, but not quite near there. But we can certainly, that's a condition, S-Power, and they would stop that immediately if they knew that was occurring. We'll communicate with them tomorrow.
It was already communicated with them through the AVA QMD. It was, I saw the photos, and they did send a notice of violation to them. So, we did do that.
I appreciate that. Wow, that time goes fast. That was my main concern.
You've got more time. It's okay.
I want to address, some of us, you know, I'm not a biologist by any means, but I did study forestry for two years in a prior life. And we're seeing, some of us residents are seeing a massive increase in the large predators in our areas moving away from the solar farms. And some of us, I've heard a lot of the legal stuff, and I've heard a lot of the environmental impact stuff, and those of us regular people, we don't understand it. And I was wondering if S-Power would be interested in hosting some sort of a symposium with Antelope Bakers meetings, so that we can sort of visually understand the mitigation issues. We're concerned about our environment, you know. And lastly, as a member of our Antelope Bakers Town Council's Illegal Dumping Committee, I'm often out on the dirt roads, and I see the S-Power employees working in lots that we have shown in the past have been shown to have valley fever spores, and I don't see them wearing masks or anything like that. I wonder, I'd like to know what S-Power is doing to educate your employees for their own safety and their own well-being. I don't see them wearing masks. I wear a mask when I go out there. And I just bring this up because I'm not only concerned about my community, I'm concerned about everybody's safety and well-being. I'd just like to see S-Power address these issues before any further development takes place.
Does the mask filter the spore?
That, I don't know. I know that they have protocols which have been backed up by science on how they protect their employees. I know that they would be more than willing to explain those at the town council meeting.
I'd be more concerned that they'd be willing to enforce.
Well, again, I think they do, and their intent is to force. If they have employees not doing that, they would want to know about that.
Mayor Paris? In our review of the environmental documents and consideration of conditional use permits for solar projects, do include the requirement for training and gives the employee the option of utilization of the mask. There's also conditions relative to wind-blown dust, where they have to shut the projects down. So, the employer can't demand that the employee wear the mask.
Why not?
However, they provide the training and...
Why not?
Provide the service.
Why can't we make it mandatory?
I think you need to direct that question to the city attorney.
I will have to look into it, but I would expect they could force them to wear it.
Well, my concern is, is that we end up, as taxpayers, paying for people that contract... Valley fever. Valley fever.
I'll look into it.
And, you know, if it's a simple prevention, first of all, I want to know, do the masks work? And what conditions should they be required to be worn? The issue on, I want to know if there is an effect on the wildlife situation that is significant. I don't want to do these things blindly. I don't want to spend a fortune on it, but certainly, that has to have been answered by now. With unbiased research, what is it? All right? Before we continue with this, I'm not saying I want to delay anything. I'm saying I want to know the answer to these things. The, you know, the fundamental cognitive error is that once we decide on a path, we disregard everything else. And I don't want us to be guilty of that. All right? But it goes both ways. Right? I mean, let's find out. And, but again, I recognize the trade-off, but I think it's far more important that the city has the resiliency it does not have now. All right?
Understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. Of course.
I did talk with the city manager in regards to having some type of mitigation fee for the study of valley fever and to do all these projects, so it doesn't fall onto us. We said that we would work on those. I think it's a good time to develop that.
Well, isn't it, at this point, just a question of doing the research and finding out?
We have an environmental mitigation fee that we assess every project. It's a $770 per acre fee, which is used for a number of things, including acquisition of mitigation property. And, I mean, that resource, I don't know how, I don't know what's in the bank, but that resource is available.
There was a separate request to look at also an additional fee that perhaps go to direct research and mitigation. The other thing about wildlife and such, the environmental documents, environmental review does include the impact on wildlife and such. So, for the projects, when they're approved, that does get in there. We can report that back.
Okay. Can we get a simple answer to it? One that I can understand?
I mean, yes.
I didn't graduate from high school. Remember that. See, anybody can learn.
No, I think it's good, but it's, it's, all the experts are debating what causes valley fever. When it's there, if you break soil, if it's watered down, it activates the valley fever. How long it takes, we should know all that. We should know what it takes and when it's activated, how long it's activated for.
Right now, I just want to know, does the mask prevent it? Does it filter it out?
There was, recently, Mayor, we had a presentation at the A-K-M-D board meeting where the experts came in specifically to valley fever. Maybe it might be appropriate for that lady to come and visit us here, or at least staff...
And we can film it and put it on the website.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah, because she seemed to be the most knowledgeable.
I do not want to hear from some shill from the industry.
No.
I mean, she has to be real.
She actually did studies with the gentleman talked about out there and specified what areas are active with valley fever, and tagged those areas, and did different stuff throughout the entire Antelope Valley. So, she's from a University of Bakersfield, so she's very knowledgeable, and she's a microbiologist.
And the planning commission has that presentation scheduled as well. Oh, good. Should we do it there? All right, but I want to, I want to edit it out, I mean, cut out from the meeting, made its own presentation, and put it on the television, our television station and the internet.
Yeah, that might be real well to help educate the public. Yeah, I just don't want people to get the wrong impression that the A-K-M-D board, we've been blind to that. We've been, I think that was our second presentation, too, that we'd had on valley fever.
And keep it under 20 minutes, otherwise, people won't watch it.
You have a question from a lady? Can you come up to the podium, please?
Sort of like an S seminar, you know? You got to come up and take the mic. You remember what an S seminar is, don't you? No?
Hi, I'm Connie Weiss, and we live right behind the desert woodland. And in 2010, I was diagnosed with valley fever. And it took nine months on medication to even be able to breathe again. And I, well, I'm paranoid of it, because I know every time my resistance gets down, it comes back. It doesn't go away. You don't have to be a gardener. You don't have to work in the element. It's in our air. So, when did I contract it? No way to tell. How long did I have before it was diagnosed? No way to tell. But it is real.
I don't, I don't have any doubts. I have no doubts whatsoever. You know? My question was, does the mask...
You know, whether you water it down, but we have so much dirt already, why build more? I mean, why dig up more? Because it's already there.
What I'm trying to do is mitigate the risks.
Yeah. I'd like that.
Okay.
Yeah, but just to realize that, you know, so many studies are done, it's still there.
No, I get that. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Come on down. Everybody else is, come on. We're suspending the rules tonight. Can I do that?
I'm a licensed respiratory care practitioner for 35 years. There are masks that offer barriers. I believe it's the N2. As far as businesses, policy and procedures can be written that you have to follow those guidelines to work that job with safety equipment. I don't know how enforceable it is. It's like the flu shot. We have people that won't take it, but then they have to wear a mask. So, what do you do?
I'd make them take the shot, but that's me.
Yeah, there's special masks, so they're not your, where you go into Walmart and buy them.
All right. I want to, I want to make certain we look at that, that we don't put some worthless ordinance out there. If it's a special mask we need, then I want to do the special mask. But it's far too late after you get it. I mean, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's killing people out there, and it's a slow death. All right. Do we have to do anything?
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute. The public hearing is now closed.
Wow.
I did that all by myself.
You did? Good!
You did?
Yeah, even old people can learn.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We adopt and authorize Resolution 1814.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
That was items A and B, as noted on the agenda.
And it's unanimous. All right. Public hearing, item number two. Community Development Block Grant. Do you have any cards?
No cards.
Then we will waive the report. Public hearing is now open. Elizabeth Brubaker can stay in her seat. And the public hearing is now closed. And is there a motion?
Move PH2.
Second then? Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. PH3, Operating Covenant Agreement with Boulevard Renewal.
No speaker cards.
I must also recuse myself from PH3 due to the proximity of my employer.
Okay. You're out of here. But the public hearing's now open.
No speaker cards.
I don't know, but I think we should make Shannon do it anyway. No, I'm kidding. You can have a seat. It's all right. Is there a motion?
You need to close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing?
Didn't learn.
You'd think I'd hear.
I know. I'll move that we adopt Resolution 18-15.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous with Councilperson Underwood Jacobs, Street Cleveland. Come on back, Angela. New Business, Item 1, purchase and sale of ABMC for the sale of an eight-acre portion of, yeah, all those numbers. Okay. Let's hear the staff report. Shannon, you're on. Just when you thought you were going to walk out of here...
I really wanted to come up, so I'm happy.
Oh, okay.
So, this is a straightforward purchase and sale agreement for a portion of a parcel that the city owns. We own approximately 19 acres here, right next to the 14 freeway, and this is adjacent to the auto mall. This is K8, and the Kaiser complex is just south of here. So, with that said, this has been a parcel that has been marketed for sale by the successor agency since we purchased it about 15 years ago, and it's been envisioned as an extension of the auto mall. So, we have received an offer for appraised value for an eight-acre portion of this site from ABMC, who is actually the new Toyota of Lancaster owner right here. They see tremendous potential in our market, and they're looking to use this land for excess vehicle storage, as well as long-term a collision center. And they do believe this will be able, this will help enable them to have the stock that they need, the inventory they need, to increase our sales tax revenue, and of course, their sales of vehicles. So, a good news story all around. They have already seen substantial success in our market, increasing 46% of sales tax revenue year over year in quarter four of last year. So, this, the purchase price is $2.10 per square foot. We have an appraisal that supports that price, and the total value is $731,000. Those funds will be dispersed to, assuming approval by the Oversight Board.
Say all that again. How much a foot?
$2.10 per square foot. And assuming approval by the Oversight Board, those funds would be dispersed to the affected taxing entities as part of the successor agency wind down.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move, we approve SA NB1.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Where'd Shannon go? Oh, you're still there? That's good. All right. Let's hear a staff report, SA NB2.
This is a similar arrangement. It's a purchase and sale agreement, again, fairly straightforward. This is a former successor agency property out near Foxfield Airport. There's a 10.46 acre portion, and we have received two competing offers on this property, one of which was for full appraised value at $1.90 per square foot for a total price of $865,000. And the other offer was for about half that at $1.00 per square foot. So, our recommendation is that you proceed to approve the $1.90 per square foot offer, and we would, again, take it in full appraised value. Those funds would be, assuming Oversight Board approval, dispersed to the taxing entities after escrow closes.
Thank you. We have one speaker card. Fran?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Fran Serra Serra. I hope you, excuse me. I hope you can hear me. I just had a quick question. What type of businesses are going to be put in there? I know that it's going to be industrial, but what type of industrial building or businesses? And also, what percentages would that increase our job, our job writing?
I don't know. Shannon? Shannon, come in.
The individual, Fraber Properties, that has made this offer, actually owns an interest in the adjacent property, which is for medical cannabis cultivation. And while there are no existing plans on this site, our assumption is that it would tie into that development.
If that's the case, I thought we had already reached our, our percentage, I thought we were only supposed to have five, excuse me, five businesses for cannabis, growing cannabis inside. I thought we had already reached that part of it. So how come we can have some more now?
We reported to the council, the council authorized 10, 5, and then had, had to come back and report, which we did. We have five CUPs already approved. There are five more that will likely go to the planning commission within this year, which have reached the 10 the council set as a limit. It is potential, if they're joining properties, that you could amend an existing CUP if, in fact, that was the purpose on this.
But I will note that before the council tonight is merely the acquisition of property. This is not the approval of any use on that property. This is merely the sale of property from the successor agency, which is required by law to dissolve and dispose of its assets. So right now, we're not discussing that issue yet.
Okay, good. Because there's also one, I just remember something in the past that we allowed one company that had, I don't remember how many acres, but he had, in succession, I think it was like a total of five different buildings with five different entities that owned, unless I'm getting my information wrong, but I think, I read that, I heard that in the planning commission meetings. And I thought that, that particular company, I thought, since it had five, already five sections of, to, to raise cannabis, was part, instead of it being one, was actually five, five units instead of one. I don't know if I'm making myself clear.
I'm not sure which one you're remembering. There was a couple of large ones. The one out near Foxfield was a large development that contemplated five or six buildings, and that has been approved by the planning commission.
Okay, but I, my, my thing is, isn't, since it's five, wouldn't that be construed as one, a part of the 10 that you've already committed to approving? Or am I wrong?
That is one license is one CUP. That's one development, which includes one of the 10 licenses, even though it's multiple subunits, if you will.
Oh. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move, we approve SA 01-18.
Is there a second?
A second.
Go ahead.
Zero three?
18.
Did you get your numbers mixed up again, Mark?
Probably.
And I'll second. SA NB2, as noted on the agenda.
Let's clear it and let's vote again. It's unanimous. Thank you. The Lancaster TV update. Toy, this better be good. Oh, what? NB1. See, I was so excited about NB2, I just went right by NB1. Do you have any speaker cards on NB1?
No speaker cards.
I want to hear it anyway. Jason, come on up.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, I am honored, happy, and proud to announce that we are the recipient of nearly $1.2 million of energy efficiency money from the Southern California Edison ratepayers. I'm also proud and happy to say we're the second city in the state to do that. The first was Marin, who, who we know was the first CCA in the state. This is pretty cool for us, because this gives us the opportunity to control some of our energy efficiency money locally, and it's, it's, it sets a standard for other CCAs as they launch and as they grow, that they can mimic and recreate what we've done. With that, I want to ask Kathy Wells to come up. She can tell you the details of the program, how it's going to operate, and the benefits that your community will see.
Good evening. Okay. Now I don't know how to use this, I'm sorry. Forward and back, easy. Good evening, Council and Mayor Paris. We're thrilled to share with you a little bit about Lancaster Energy's Efficiency Program Plan this evening. As Jason mentioned, it is the second, we are the second community choice aggregator in the state to receive approval from the CPUC. And more importantly, we're the first CCA in Southern California Edison territory to do it. We're the first CCA, so we're pretty proud of that. And offering energy efficiency programs further advances the goals and the mission of Lancaster Choice Energy. You know, at, at the core of our goals, we want lower-priced clean energy, we want to become a net-zero city, local decision-making. And offering energy efficiency programs is the first step to achieving these goals. So last year, actually this year, we're entering into our third year, we have saved our customers more than $2.8 million just in the programs that we currently offer. You know, we offer the Personal Choice Solar Program, we have 100% renewable energy program, we have local solar now, 10-megawatt facility in Lancaster. But the next step to reaching our net-zero goals is offering energy efficiency programming, which will help reduce costs and bring cleaner, greener energy to our community. These are some of the benefits of energy efficiency, energy reductions, of course, there's a cost-saving, health and safety, and our goal advancement. And energy efficiency, it's a top priority with the California Public Utilities Commission. Traditionally, it's the ratepayer-funded programs are administered by the IOUs, that would be Southern California Edison. But as of 2014, legislation allows community choice aggregators to elect to administer such programs to our customers. So in about 2017, about a year ago, we began the process of becoming an administrator, putting together an energy efficiency program plan, which council approved last year. And in October of 2017, we filed our advice letter requesting certification from the PUC. And we're proud to say, on April 26, we were certified by the CPUC to administer a program of almost $1.2 million. The funding does come from charges already collected by Southern California Edison ratepayers. The program will be governed by the CPUC, and it's a three-year program with annual budget installments, of which we just received our first installment, I think it's this week we're going to be receiving it. And for the program, we've got two specific programs that we developed. We want to start off slow, we want to start walk before we run. So we decided to come up with a residential program and another program that will benefit our small businesses. That's a majority of our commercial accounts is our small commercial businesses. With our small commercial program, one of the programs is free onsite assessment for energy efficiency. So they're going to, recommendations will be for lighting upgrades, refrigeration, smart thermostats, for example. And the program goal is to retrofit up to 750 businesses during the plan. And this one I'm excited about, this is, yes?
Who pays for that?
This is paid through ratepayers. It's funds that have already been collected by Southern California Edison.
So is that our ratepayers, or?
Yes. All ratepayers have already paid for these funds. They're non-bypassable charges that have already been collected and been distributed to Southern California Edison, actually.
And so what does it mean when we retrofit? Do we actually go in and pay for it?
Yes, actually, so it is a program that is already administered by Southern California Edison. And you may remember, one of the programs was, we did LED retrofits. In fact, we had a campaign where we went out and spoke to all of our local businesses, and then Edison ran out of money, which was the impetus for us to do our own program. It does pay for the retrofits, and we will be doing an RFP, getting contractors and vendors together, and-
What's the selection process?
Well, we haven't started that yet, but we do have a consultant that's going to help us put together a competitive bid. Yeah, and I don't, I don't, we haven't started that process yet, but, I'm sorry. That's part of the, well, we haven't gotten there yet. I've already been talking to. I know they have to be qualified, so they have to be under 200 KV. It's, it's a certain parameter that Edison actually has established. So our consultant will help us design that, and that will be all laid out in the specifications.
Shouldn't we be starting with the least energy efficient and working up at that point?
Yeah, yes, and I imagine that's what we will do. So that's where I would come in. As staff member, they're going to work with us to get load data.
Okay. I want to, I want to see how that works, Lauren, when it happens.
We can, we could bring it back to council once we've designed the program for a report on the program before implementation.
I, I just think that it-
Big expansion, big block.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, absolutely. And there is, there are certain parameters we have to comply with. PUC regulates it, so we will be doing monitoring and reporting on a regular basis, so we can bring that back and share those results with you.
Thank you.
And for our residential, we're going to have an energy advisor program. This is, this is not a new program, this is something that is out there. You've heard of California, what is it, Energy Upgrade California? Southern California Edison does offer a program. But this program is going to be specific to our community, our demographic. So much like the businesses, they're, they're going to target certain customers. I will get those parameters to you. And it's going to be a free energy evaluation. They can do it over the phone, or even an in-home audit. And we will be able to offer them upgrade suggestions, behavior education, efficiency appliance information, resources for rebates, and other financing options, and other programs that we may be implementing, such as our EV. We're, we're getting ready to embark on our electric vehicle transportation programs, too. So we can share all that information with the customers when we contact them directly.
Okay.
So next steps. The next steps, the first is going to be program design. That will be in the next two weeks. We're going to be working with our consultant, Frontier Energy, who helped us write the advice letter. We're going to develop an RFP, and we'll have the specifications for the consultants and the program service providers. That will be in the next two weeks. And then from there, once we select our vendors, and we bring it to council, we will have the program implementation, which will be marketing and outreach. So I, I believe that's going to start around July. We're targeting July to start the marketing and the outreach for a fall launch. And then program management is what I talked about, we're going to be doing program results. We have mandatory reporting, we have to respond to the CPUC, and that's what I've got. Any questions? I did my first one! Thank you, everybody! That was my first one! I feel so much better now. Okay, now you can ask questions.
Kathy is where, Kathy is with Cedar Street Theater, so she's been on stage several times.
I'm shy.
You were doing so well to the finale.
Till then, wait!
All right, I want, when you do this, I want to, I want you to build into it that we actually see an energy reduction.
Oh, yes.
And build, in the RFP, make that part of what they get paid. I mean, I'm not really interested in people coming in and doing stuff that doesn't result-
Yes. And actually, that is part of the reporting. There are mandatory, we will have numbers on GHG reduction, and there's certain parameters we have to hit. There's certain markers that we have to hit, so I will bring that back when we report.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, let's, do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
I'll move that we accept, recognize, and appropriate NB1 A and B.
Second that? Let's vote. Passage unanimous. Okay, CA1, approve a reward of $10,000 for information-
NB2.
I thought we already did two. Oh, no! This is the-
Toy, you let me down. Why didn't you stand, you should have given me some kind of clue. My apologies, Mayor.
Why don't you tell me to, never mind.
Jason left all his junk behind. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and Commissioners. It is my pleasure to come before you tonight with a team to provide you with an update on the progress made so far on the relaunch of the city's government television channel, known as Channel 28, to be relaunched as Lancaster Television, or what we have affectionately dubbed as LTV. Staff is very excited tonight to introduce the new TV channel concept and looks forward to your feedback. By way of background, over the past year, the communications team has spent a great deal of time reviewing and responding to the challenge of how we can effectively take the city's communication efforts to the next level. Such a response included taking a hard look at our current level of service delivery, identifying council and their organization's areas of focus specific to communications, acknowledging our own strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, all in an effort to derive a path forward. The product of the many discussions resulted in a comprehensive communications review and plan. A plan intended to improve, enhance, and progress the city's communications effort through two goals. One, community engagement, defined as evaluating and enhancing two-way engagement with residents, to welcome and strengthen open dialogue and reciprocal relationships, to build a better, stronger, participatory, and connected Lancaster. Goal number two, creativity, innovation, and technology, defined as allowing for new ideas to be explored, learned, and implemented, using modern technology to ensure the city's communications and marketing efforts are efficient, of highest quality, progressive, and most successful. Each of these goals has multiple strategies of execution associated with them with a laundry list of action items. Without going into the details of the plan tonight, I share in general, communications focuses and deliverables are strategic, and everything we point to derives points back, excuse me, to the fulfillment of the goals and ensures alignment with the vision of the mayor and city council. Tonight's presentation is a direct result of the communications goals and specifically three strategies therein. One, to review, explore, and identify effective engagement. Two, to harness staff innovation and creativity. And last but not least, to review and recreate Channel 28. The review of the channel established a course of action to move the channel towards expansion and strengthening the connectivity to and engagement of the Lancaster community. The review also recognized the relationship between the use of state-of-the-art equipment, the needs for new programming, demographic considerations, external factors, as well as the state of all operations necessary to facilitate the transformation of the channel, with the mission to engage, educate, and inform. From a high-level perspective, we are approaching the channel review and the relaunch as a strategic opportunity for the city to tell and share the essence of Lancaster in a deep and meaningful way. Truly, this channel will be Lancaster's home, a place where our community can come alive on the screen. Our work started last year with an honest and in-depth assessment of our existing television channel, Channel 28. At that time, staff welcomed the opportunity to completely reimagine the city's television channel as a way to augment and qualify our message and illuminate our brand. Since then, communication staff has been very busy preparing for the launch of LTV. The task to review and develop something new guided our work to this point. The task to review and develop something new guided our work to this point, resulting in a reimagined channel, expanded programming and amplification of the city's brand. In parallel with and support of the community engagement goal, with the specific strategy to develop a measurement metric system, a community survey will be launched about the city's channel to learn more about viewer habits and interests, engage our baseline data in order to measure our future success. The survey will be available on all city channels and we encourage everyone to visit the Lancaster Engage page to take it. Measurement of our success will also be gauged through our analytics derived from other platforms like our city website and social media accounts. In just a moment, you will hear from Communications Manager Joe Cabral, who will give you an update on programming and operational efforts. But first, I'd like to turn things over to Nicole Allen, who will give you a quick look at how the re-imagination of the city's Channel 28 will integrate with the, with and enhance our other communication endeavors and truly jumpstart the city's rebranding effort through LTV.
Thank you, Troy. Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, Council and City officials. My name is Nicole Allen and I am the Strategic Communications and Marketing Analyst. Recently, the Communications Division was restructured to maximize resources toward two distinct categories. Media Relations and Multimedia, which falls under Joseph Cabral, and focuses on LTV, Video Production and Equipment Management, and Strategic Communications and Marketing, which falls under me, and focuses on messaging via editorial, mass communication, websites, social media presentations and campaigns. This realignment allows us to put concentrated energy into fully developing our government channel, while the other side of the House centers on strategically sharing and engaging with the community more effectively via all other communication mediums. We are incredibly excited about the opportunities ahead and how the launch of LTV will pair with our existing communications program. As we integrate this newly reimagined tool with our existing efforts, it is crucial to understand, there is no silver bullet when it comes to communications. The days of relying solely on local newspaper or evening news to get our message across are gone. The reality is, there is a lot of competing noise in today's marketplace for viewers' eyes and ears. Between social networks, smartphones and streaming media, agencies like ours have a lot of competition when it comes to engaging our target audiences. On the other side of this coin, however, there is a second vital realization. Today, we are able to leverage our own media outlets, such as our website, social media and Outlook magazine, to not only garner more, more market share, but most importantly, to tell our community's story in a transparent and accurate way. Our current communications ecosystem offers a variety of tools for reaching our residents and stakeholders, including the aforementioned city website, social media and city publications, as well as community events and advertising opportunities. Now, we also have LTV to add to this equation. LTV will serve as the hub of our ecosystem. And while LTV does have its own Twitter and handle at LTV Wow, the aim is to diversify and integrate, not replace and duplicate. Strategic Communications and Marketing will be responsible for making sure our messages are consistent and cohesive across all channels, to ensure all our communications are accurate, intentional and impactful. We will also be heading up a marketing campaign to get the word out about LTV. The fully integrated marketing plan begins with our feature spread in this upcoming June Outlook and launches into high gear in July. The marketing plan will increase awareness and viewership for the channel via a social media campaign, community outreach, radio, newspaper and billboard advertising, promotional giveaways and more. Our goal is to make sure everyone in Lancaster and really the entire Antelope Valley knows they can turn to Lancaster TV for the very best in local programming. What's more, we see this as a means to enhance the city's brand through an unfiltered lens, so residents, visitors and businesses have an understanding of Lancaster's true identity, which is a city of firsts, a city of innovation, a city that prays, a city that focuses on art and culture, growth and opportunity, compassion, a city that has bold leadership and progressive vision. This is why our LTV mission is to engage, educate and inform through relevant and topical programming, which we will achieve by delivering valuable, reliable and comprehensive information regarding city programs and services via all communication mediums. Next up will be Communications Manager Joseph Cabral, who will provide more details regarding LTV. Thank you.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, City Council members, it's my great pleasure to be here this evening to share with you how our team has been working together to take Lancaster Television, or LTV, to the next level. I'm going to start off by acknowledging the efforts of our two in-house producers, Juan Abad and Luke Duncan, both of whom have... Both of whom have been working diligently on the coming launch of LTV. And to complement their ongoing efforts, we've been utilizing our PEG capital funds to acquire a number of pieces of production equipment to enhance the quality of our productions today and into the future. Among these are three 4K resolution ultra-high definition cameras, which position us to take full advantage of future technological advances. In parallel, we've updated our edit base to state-of-the-art capabilities and we now have an asset management system similar to those found in small television stations. And this integrated system allows us to much more efficiently access our growing library of video assets and it's also scalable for the future. Meanwhile, we've been building a production team, which will further enable us to bring our vision to life. In fact, we've identified quite a number of Antelope Valley-based vendors to assist with our LTV productions. JKP Fusion is a local production company that produces videos literally around the world. In fact, principal party Josh Kland recently returned from shooting multiple productions in Europe. Urban Productions has been making videos which highlight various aspects of the Antelope Valley for quite a number of years. In fact, I'm certain Mayor Paris and the City Council members will recognize principal party Cody Urban, who previously served as a reporter-producer for the now-defunct Time Warner Local News. And yes, Urban really is his last name. Lighthouse Studios is located on 10th Street West here in Lancaster and is owned and operated by popular local entrepreneur Budikai Ekanyahay, whom we think wisely chose not to use his last name when naming his studio. Many people around time know Budikai, who's actually in attendance here today, as he serves on the Executive Board of the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce. And he knew I was going to say that. I believe the entire City Council is familiar with Brian Armstrong, the principal party of Lancaster-based streamlined audiovisual. Brian's been instrumental in consulting on our various equipment purchases and upgrades. Sarah Omeedy is the head of Designs by Sarah, and she's been designing logos and graphical elements for use in a number of our productions. And last but not least, JPW Communications, which is now located just a stone's throw away next to Starbucks on the Boulevard, will be instrumental during the rollout of LTV's integrated marketing plan. So as the saying goes, rising tides raise all boats, and I'm very happy to report that this is certainly the case with LTV and our cadre of industry-leading local vendors. With this production team now in place, we're laser-focused on producing new shows and continuing producing our existing shows with the goal of engaging, educating and informing our LTV viewers. We currently have three new shows in production. True Community will take a look at the many individuals and organizations which make up the very fabric of this community. The Council experienced a sneak peek of this when you enjoyed the handful of community contributors that we honored last year during our 40th anniversary celebration. A few of the organizations which have already been profiled for this upcoming show are Penny Lane, Desert Haven and the Salvation Army. Outlook Live is a program which takes stories from the award-winning Outlook magazine and brings them to life via the magic television. Inside the Artist explores Lancaster's art scene, offering up close and personal interviews with various artists from music, dance, photography, sculpture, painting and you name it, just about any genre of art that can be found here in the city of Lancaster. Of course, the LTV lineup will continue to include a number of other viewer favorites such as Local Gourmet, which takes a behind-the-scenes look at the area's many dining hotspots, Made in Lancaster, which spotlights our robust manufacturing sector, and Local Business Spotlight, which will continue to illuminate the city's wide variety of small, medium and large businesses. But that's not all, we're also exploring additional new shows such as The Dias, which will allow LTV viewers to meet their City Council members, Rex Talks, which will let viewers hear from their mayor, Uniquely Us, highlighting a number of Lancaster's exclusive points of interest, Classroom and Beyond, which will focus on Lancaster's flourishing educational scene, and Healthy Living, which will take a look at ways to live a better life. And then to round out the programming, we'll continue to air those many high-quality educational segments offered by University California Television, or UCTV, LA NOW, which is produced by LA County, and of course, our many city partners. A full schedule's being developed and will be available online at the launch of LTV. Now, speaking of schedules, we all know that not everyone watches from the comfort of home nowadays, and thanks to the advent of smartphones, tablets and streaming media, many people are now watching their content while on the go. So we've been taking this into consideration when we've developed LTV. In fact, we're currently spearheading the development of online streaming capabilities in partnership with our website provider Vision Internet and Granicus, which is the company which has been live-streaming our commission and city council meetings for quite a number of years now. We're working closely with this team to integrate LTV's programming into a format that will be easily searchable and viewable from smartphones, tablets and laptops when LTV launches. We're also in the midst of developing a website for LTV, which will be a one-stop-shop for anyone wanting to learn more about the channel, take a deeper dive into the various shows, or simply check out the LTV schedule. This website will be fully integrated with LTV's 24/7 streaming capabilities and will also be ready at launch. So to briefly recap, the LTV survey will be available this week for our constituents to complete. The summer issue of the Outlook magazine will feature a two-page LTV spread and the integrated marketing campaign will be in full swing in parallel with the launch of LTV in July. So now what I'd like to do is provide the City Council, as well as the public, a quick look at LTV.
You're watching LTV. Here's what we have in store on LTV.
True Community highlights Lancaster's local nonprofit, community-based and faith-based organizations, each with a unique story to share with Lancaster residents.
The award-winning Outlook magazine comes to life on Outlook Live, Lancaster's original news journal program that brings you the latest and greatest happening in our city.
Every picture is worth a thousand words and we have a lot to say on our new show, Inside the Artist. From art installations at the MOA to live performances at the LPAC, you won't want to miss all the fun, exciting entertainment here in Lancaster.
Thanks for watching LTV.
You've been watching LTV.
This concludes our report on the status of LTV and at this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions, the council, Mayor.
That was great. That was truly good, good. You guys did well, thank you. Do we have, have we trademarked that?
No.
Perhaps we should look at the internet?
Yeah.
I thought we hadn't, we will do it very shortly, like tomorrow.
And be ready to change it. And be ready to change it, we have a problem, but that's all right. There's already an LTV out there. Okay, so we may have to change the logo, but that's okay. What you guys did here is just superb. It's, wow. All right.
Okay, sorry.
Also, I don't like the Rex Talks, you know, it'll be, we'll include the council, make, change the name of that, all right?
Yeah, no problem.
And, wow. Wow.
The Twitter handle is LTV Wow, so it's amazing you're saying that. You're repeating that, actually.
I'm just really impressed. Good job, Joe.
Thank you. To the team, thank you.
On your, it's government TV, public TV, where's the boundaries?
We're a government TV station, you need to have a certain amount of programming in order to even apply for another one. So this is a government television station.
But what gives, because there's a tipping point for public access, where is that?
That's probably a few years away once we amass enough original programming to justify or be able to go to the FCC and ask for that.
You have the, as far as your ecosystem chart, you have advertising in there, will this be an income stream?
It could in the future, yeah, we were definitely talking about that.
Nicely done.
Okay, thank you.
We, I want to, I don't want to proceed unless we do significant market research as to, I mean, let's not have to, let's not build something and have to tear it down, all right? Every step of the way, I want to know what the market is saying as to what will attract viewers, all right? So invest that money upfront, don't wait for it to be monetized before we do that, all right?
Okay.
And if we have to raise private funds for that, we will. What?
Sorry, and we do plan on, we were missing not saying that I was, we do plan on using metrics to judge the success of it, not just say that looks really cool and such, so yeah.
Okay, but I, but I want that before we do it, not after. See, I don't want to test the effect, I want to know what the effect's going to be before we roll it out, all right? Makes sense? I also want to know who is our target markets for all of these stations before we start, all right? Let's be very, very clear of what we're aiming for, but this is really cool. All right? Good.
Mayor, we do have a community survey that we're gathering information upfront to gauge any of those pre-existing metrics, to see what's missing and what we need to...
That's not what I was thinking. Surveys require us to ask people what they want and rarely do I know what I want. So let's, let's reach into the networks, find out what they're using to, when they created Hulu, they didn't do it in the blind, right? So let's find out what they used. Okay? Did I say it right, Hulu?
Yes.
Is that the name of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know I spend a lot of time watching. Yeah, I know I spend a lot of time watching it these days, so they must have known what they were doing. All right? Good. Thank you very much. You guys are doing incredible work.
Yes, we're just, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now can I go to, do we got to do anything?
CA-1.
CA-1. Approve a reward of $10,000 for information leading to the arrest and execution of the person through, I'm sorry, conviction of the persons responsible for the double murder case. No? Can't have an, okay.
Let's stick with conviction, please.
Okay, Andrew Chavez and Clody Reyes. So do we need to vote on that, or can we just do it?
We need to vote on it.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Passes unanimously. Whatever happened to dead or alive? I guess I did, didn't I? All right, council reports. Anybody have a burning desire?
Just real quick, the ABTA did receive the last of its needed grants, the 13 million that will allow it to go all-electric. They will be the first in the country to go all-electric, so it's good news there. Went to Law Day, saw the mayor's son receive Lawyer of the Year, which was nice. Mayor Prer Breakfast was great. Did the TDA Article 8 hearings at ABTA that allowed us that there's no unmet transit needs, and did a business appreciation dinner at the fairgrounds, something that we might want to do here, Mark, for our community partners.
Well, tell me about it.
It's when they recognize and say thank you to business, it's when the, all the boards get together and thank the people that sponsor at the fair, and it's a business appreciation where they get together and say thank you to all the businesses that do participate at the fairgrounds.
Hmm, good. Okay, great.
I had the amazing opportunity to attend Bishop Henry Hearne's 85th birthday celebration at Castaways on the 21st of April, and it was a wonderful event, and happy birthday again, Bishop Hearne's. I also attended the First Responders Appreciation Day at Lancaster Baptist Church this past And we had a 2018 Muscle Mania AV Natural Championships here that was on the 28th, and it was hosted by a woman by the name of Ruby, and she is about approximately 70 years old is what she had told us, and she is a fitness expert, and it was a really nice event as well. A lot of families attended this event, and in fact, there were, one of the competitors was 15 years of age, and he won, so that was completely awesome. Next, coming up, we have a event or a community visioning workshop for the Lancaster Library, and that's going to be this Thursday, May 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Sergeant Steve Owen Memorial Park at the Stanley Kleiner Activity Center. So we would hope that we can get some input from the community to, we want to know what your thoughts are regarding the library that we have here in the city of Lancaster.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, and my Vice Mayor, and all of you staff, and my city manager, thank you so much for your services. And being that I had an opportunity to serve here for 18 years, it, it really costs to serve, because all kind of things get thrown at you, but you, you're doing it, and I'm so proud of all of you. I really appreciate that. Congratulations to Mr. Molly and to Mr. Chris for being back a part of the team, and we're very proud and thankful for that. Couple of other things I'd like to just mention very quickly. One is that on the 8th, rather, the 18th, 19th, and 20th, we're going to have what we call from the old, I guess you would look at it from the black population and church operation, a tent revival right here in the park on Fifth Street East, and it's not going to be just only for getting people into the church, but really getting people to change their minds and living a better life in their community and serving their community. That's what we'll be looking at, and that's the 18th, 19th...
Henry, white people have tent revivals too.
Pardon?
White people have tent revivals too.
Yeah, but they, they kind of like us, those guys. The upper class don't do that.
Oh.
That's all right. The other thing I wanted to ask permission to do, I did not bring the paperwork, but the last week in April, Bishop Grover C. Tally passed away, and we funalized him on the 5th of May, and he moved to the Antelope Valley in 1951, and has just done all kind of things in our community, both in the Sun Village area, Palmdale, and Lancaster, to make the community better. I wish, if at all possible, that the meeting could be adjourned in honor of Bishop Grover L. Tally. That's my request. I did not bring the paperwork for that.
What's the name again, Henry?
Grover.
Henry, let's do that at the next meeting, so I can do it properly. Okay?
Okay. I appreciate it. I'll bring it all. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Henry. Okay. City Clerk.
Manager's report.
Oh, manager's report. I'm running out of gas, so hurry up.
I will be quick as I can. We thank the council and for pushing us on communication and for paying attention to communication. We're very excited about Lancaster TV. We get to tell the real story of Lancaster and the Antelope Valley. There's a lot of people that raise their families here because they believe this community is worthy of that, and we need to get that story out more, so we really thank you, and we're very, very excited about this year with Lancaster TV. We have our Mother's Day Tea coming up Saturday at MOA. Also, we have the new exhibit opening that day. It's really spectacular. If you go there, they've done an amazing job, and we'd invite the public to come out Saturday at 4 o'clock. The, we have some construction ending on 10th Street West, except for where that's ended, our closures, except for some localized closures around Hunter Dodge. We will be, I know this will make a lot of people happy, we will be opening up, if all goes well, 20th Street West, the very end of this week, so it'll be open next week, and we've started the project on Avenue I to completely redo Avenue I. Lee Durico pointed out, if you go out there and see the level of Avenue I, how much pavement's there, you will understand that that street's been there for decades and how many times it's been paved over and how deep it goes, so pretty amazing, and it's well worth going out and looking at it. We will, at your next council meeting, at the direction of the mayor and council, be reporting on the process by which TOT could be adjusted. And then in terms of homelessness, there's a lot of things going on. In the interest of time, I'll just touch on a couple. The Kensington campus has broken ground. Groundbreaking will be June 14th. We have a study underway, which Ms. Chisholm has reported on in the past. We have definitely engaged the supervisors, deputies, and the county in directly dealing and quickly with the issue of underground encampments and drainage ditches and such. The Planning Commission yesterday at their study session, I believe it was yesterday or this week, talked about how they're going to deal with the shopping cart issue that were directed by council to do. We are also looking at other things, ordinances, perhaps that look at people who are distributing large amounts of food, which don't do any good to anyone or a health hazard. They think they're doing good, and we'll be taking that up at criminal justice probably in June. So there's a lot going on that's coordinated. You'll hear more about that in the budget message, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Housing Authority, no action. Financing Authority, no action. Lancaster Power Authority, no action. I want to say something about, there has been some concern about the deputy mayors and whether or not we need them and why we have them. It is, as long as I'm mayor, it is going to be my intent to open this city up as much as possible to community being actively engaged in the management of the city. I am more concerned about what people are able to accomplish than what title they may have. An example of that is Lisa Rodriguez. I have every expectation that the way business is being done along Sierra Highway is about to change. I don't want there to be any surprise to anybody. Anybody engaged in prostitution in their business should expect to lose their business. It's going to happen, and it's going to happen quickly. So I don't want anybody coming saying, "Look what they did to us." I'm going to do this to you, and she's going to be the one to coordinate that, all right? The, so that's where that is. In regards to the Architectural and Design Commission, you guys are going to be getting really busy in, with what we have planned and what's in store for us. But I want it to be very clear that regardless of what anybody may have heard, I am completely supporting all of the members of that commission. Are we clear? The, we oftentimes are called on to forgive each other when we behave stupidly, all right? And Lord knows, you've had to forgive me on many, many occasions, and that should be extended to everyone, okay? Thank you. City Clerk.
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members, and department heads. My name is James Harris. I am a resident of Lancaster and a student at Antelope Valley College. I'm currently enrolled in Political Science 101, and it is a class assignment that observes a city council meeting to learn an aspect about city government and how it works. And thank you very much for your time.
You were doing so well!
Couldn't close the deal. Couldn't close the deal. I learned that there's a lot going on in the city. I learned a little bit about my school, about the updates with the construction, the plans for, hopefully I'll be finished before that even starts. Kind of running low on time here, but I learned, I learned a lot. Learned a lot. Very interesting process.
What would you like to see?
Probably more of the same. As a, as a homeowner here and a longtime resident, need to be more informed, probably need to get more out. I like the ideal about the LTV. Looks like something that I'll be paying attention to in the future, so I'm looking forward to that rollout. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Perry Credle.
Good evening, Your Honor, Vice Mayor, and esteemed city council members. Two things. One, I want to go on the tail end of Bishop Hearne's message about the city, about the tent revival. It is for everyone. We have ministers and pastors coming from, from, all the way from Bakersfield to LA and of all colors, all right? So it's not just, just African-American.
That's a good point. Did you hear with the bishop?
We have, we have a lot of Hispanic ministers that's going to be there. We tried to reach out to everybody else, everybody that we could. All right, it's going to be a big thing, three days. I hope to see some of you, if not all of you there.
What are you saying?
You're, you're more than welcome. You're invited. There will be other politicians there, by the way. Just a little, just to let you know. The other reason I'm here is because, believe, the last time I saw you here, you said that you wanted to have a presentation after Deputy Mayor Doris mentioning that the unemployment rate is at 4.2, but among the African-American and Latino community, that's significantly, significantly higher. You said that you wanted to have a presentation, and I'm trying to find out what's happened with the presentation, because you said it was going to be distributed to the churches and the community organizations.
Fortunately, your mayor is old, and he forgot. I'd like LA Economic Development to send somebody up here to give us, or somebody from the county, as to exactly where we lie in regards to the racial divide in employment, and what other demographic information we should be looking at in regards to that. Did you know, I heard this from Kevin McCarthy a few days ago, that black and Hispanic unemployment is lower now than it's ever been in our entire history?
I, I heard your, your president mentioned that. He takes a lot of credit for a lot of things, but the unemployment rate has been dropping significantly for the past 15 years.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that twittering gives you the right to take responsibility.
Well, he takes, he takes credit for everything, so. But yes, I do know it is lower than it's ever been, and it is, it is getting better, but for some, it's not getting better fast enough.
I know, but I think we ought to give it credit where it has to do.
I, I praise it. I'm out there trying to get as many people employed as I can, but you know, the, the ratio is still a little different, you know, and I need to know which, which companies are more felony-friendly. I have a lot of people that, that get out of jail, and in order to keep them from going back, we need to not just rehabilitate them about society.
Well, I'd probably frame it a little better than felony-friendly.
Well, I, I have, I have, I get flyers from, from different places that say felony-friendly employers.
Really?
Which means they, they hire people who have felonies.
You know, I, I, I get what you're saying, but I'm thinking we probably should be looking at a time element to it. How long have they been back in society without a problem? And start working it from that angle, and I'm more than happy to work with you in regards to that.
I have a program through the outreach that deals exactly with that, because a lot of the times when people have been institutionalized, when they come home, they're not, you know, so people are not so happy to see them, and often this starts with the family. A lot of the family is not crazy, you know? You're happier at home, but not really, and they have to be reintegrated into society. We have a program that, that helps work, work with them about reeducation, about finding jobs and, and getting into, to relationships with people. I don't mean just the type of relationships they had in jail, but just relationships with, with your neighbors and community.
I get it.
You're supposed to check out my website. You said you were going to do that a long time ago.
I'm old. Would, make sure, Myra, would you make sure that I do, where's Myra? Myra left? Oh my gosh.
I'll leave the card up here for you.
Take care of it? Okay, good. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and the rest of the commission group here. My husband and I moved to Lancaster temporarily in August of 1962. We raised five children here. Some of my kids went to school with your child, they're your girls, and we live on the east side. the east side. It would be very nice of you all to go get in your car and drive down Avenue J across the railroad tracks and go into the east side. Division and J is an old blue building that is at least 50 years old. I know because I bought groceries in there. It's not being used. I think there's a couple of things in there and it's just a real ugly eyesore on the east side. Unfortunately, it looks as if the homeowners over there don't care either because they don't take care of their homes. They're getting to where it's getting to be a really big problem. And I know that you have codes for what you can and cannot do. Maybe if you need to hire more people to go out and see that the codes are being lived up to, that might be a good idea. But it's really aggravating for a family that's worked all their lives to keep their house up, to see that around you. I hope that something can be done about these things because I don't want to live in an area that is really getting blighted. Go over and look. And I guess that's it. I just would like some help. I don't know what to do.
So, help her. All right? And I think she's right. If people aren't complying with the codes, let's do what we have to do. And I know which building you're talking about.
It really needs to go away.
Or rehab, one of the two. I don't know that if it's rehabbable.
We'll get your number when, we'll get your contact information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl Hyman. How are you?
May I pass these out to you?
Sure. Just give them to her.
So, thank you for your wonderful leadership and all the improvements that I've seen over the many years that you've accomplished for the city. My name is Cheryl Hyman, the founder and director of Rock, Raising Our Children's Kids, a nonprofit that provides services, support, and advocacy and education for relatives, mostly grandmas and grandpas, and extended family members and friends who are raising their family's children. I'm going to abbreviate this. It's all trust that you'll read this. I am very privileged and extremely grateful for the years that I have been blessed to occupy a room in the Low Tree Wellness House. So I've come to talk about the wellness in the community houses. And our Rock office is in the Low Tree House. We hold our support and education focus groups there and the new required family approval classes are also held there. I've decorated one of the rooms for the children's playroom and we've always been able to accommodate the numbers of kinship people that have, that we've served. I've come here for your assistance as you have the authority necessary to hopefully help with a recent challenge with the wellness and community houses. In March, we were advised by this wonderful organization that oversees these. They've been very kind and helpful and wonderful to us, AVPH. But they unfortunately had to tell us that we can have no more than 10 relatives in our meetings at the Low Tree House. We usually have upwards of 20.
Wait, 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 back up, back up. What?
Yes, and the rest of this will explain this to you. It seems that there's, I'll just abbreviate. It seems that there's no code specifically written for these houses. And so, all these years, we've been having as many people as we needed to have. One time I had a focus group for the board of supervisors there and we had, unfortunately, it was too many people, over 30 people there. And we had to manage that quickly. But, so because somebody is looking at a code that has to do with residences, since Saul explained here, they're saying that we need to have 200 square feet per person, which is not possible at the Low Tree House. There are other codes that are 20 feet per person, God bless you, if you're having seating for classrooms. And there's 15 square feet required per person if you're teaching in non-fixed tables and chairs, which is what we do. So I wish, I've included pictures of the Low Tree Wellness House and to show space and how we use it. These homes are a blessing to our community. The families who serve are very stressed as they care for their traumatized children, when the kid and children-
Okay, okay, okay. I got it. Find out who's messing with these people and tell them to stop.
Okay. Well, I don't think anybody's messing. I think it's good intent, sir.
Well, I don't care.
Yeah. But it just popped up after all this time.
No, you're doing good work. Don't worry about it. We'll take care of it.
Families love these houses. I mean, they come there and they say they're happy. And your garden out back, the mayor's garden, the broccoli is growing and the kids come there and they can't believe that broccoli is on plant. It's not in the store. So we just love having the use of those homes and we thank you very, very much.
Don't worry.
Okay, so thank you.
I mean it. All right? And if something needs to change, fix it so they continue to operate. All right? Good. Thank you. Liz, do you know what that's about?
No, I just saw the show last Thursday and I didn't hear anything about it.
Okay. Good. You're the only person I know people are more afraid of than me. Well, okay, what is, what are you pointing at? What do I got to do?
You might want to ask the fire captain.
Was that you guys?
I don't believe it was.
Okay, good. I mean, you know, there's a purpose for these things. Let's, good. All right. I think that's it. Oh, Fran. What? Oh, that's right, you do. Okay, Fran and then George, okay?
All right, there you go. Thank you again, Fran Serra, Serra speaking, Vice Mayor, I'm there, and Vice Mayor, council members. I was going to speak on MB2, but I guess my card got mixed up in the shuffle there. But my question was-
Marvin, you know, I relied on Marvin for that.
Don't go there, don't go there.
But anyway, my, I was actually, my question was answered because when I read Lancaster TV, I was thinking of Channel 3, because we don't have any more Channel 3. I know it's not just a Lancaster station, that's an Antelope Valley station. And I was wondering if that ever going to come back.
But Channel 3 used to be just a Palmdale station, so.
But now, but now it's, but at the last, it was incorporated with all the Antelope Valley.
Right.
Okay. That's what I was going to ask. But anyway, where am I here? I did want to give you a little update because I am on the Little Rock Dam Committee to restore it and bring it back. We're working on it and we're making very, very good progress. On June the 2nd, we're going to invite the public to come and take, it's not, we're starting to clean it up. We're starting to get the fundamentals done. It's not going to be really open to the public per se till probably in about six to eight months, more or less. But I just wanted to say we are making a lot of progress, which is great. And I also have something for AVTA. I was at a meeting today at Lancaster Senior Center and they were speaking on Medicare, Medi-Cal, so forth, and for the veterans. And I wanted to ask, and I'll probably bring it up again at the AVTA meeting, about buses, busing our veterans down to LA since the offices for veterans here in Lancaster are pretty much closed. An office will be opening soon, but meanwhile, I'm not saying office, I'm sorry, clinics. The clinic is being closed for veterans. And so they have to go down to LA. And as it is, the Veterans Clinic that used to be on Supovida in Mission Hills is being moved now to, I believe, Wiltshire into LA, further into LA. And I was going to ask about AVTA having buses to, for our veterans to bus them down to that area. So that's what I was going to bring up. I'll probably be bringing it up again at the AVTA meeting. But there's where I stand. I want to thank you all for listening to me. I, as you know, I love my city.
You do.
And I work hard for you guys and for my seniors. I don't work hard. What are you talking about? I just work.
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
All right. George.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen, since everything's been going so long on this meeting and everything was kind of glorifying everybody, being sworn in and everything, I'd like to recall my two cards and present them at a different meeting since somebody already did it partial of what I want to be talking about.
You are a gentleman.
Pardon me?
You are a gentleman. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. That's it, right? We're ready for closed session?
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to note at this time that as to closed session items five and seven, you will be recusing yourself due to a conflict with a case being handled by your firm. Just say yes.
Couldn't have said that in a better way. We're not suing the city.
Oh, no, 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 no. Not by any means. No, let me clarify. Your firm is handling a case that arises out of the same factual scenario and therefore you are in a conflicted position.
All right, there's no reason for me to be in the closed session at all, right?
Correct.
And so I'm going to go ahead and turn the management of the city for the next half hour over to our illustrious Vice Mayor, who will reconvene and close the meeting. Okay, right. And I'm going to go home.
So we'll adjourn and go into closed session?
Are we on?
Okay, we're back in session. Counsel?
In closed session. The city council took up closed session items five, six, and seven. No reportable action. Direction was given to legal counsel and staff.
Any questions? Any comments? We stand adjourned.